Call to order, and I don't have the exact time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a public service announcement for the folks at home watching this right now. If you haven't voted early, tomorrow is the day the polls are open from 7:00 to 8:00.
AM, PM.
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Okay. Approval of three sets of minutes. Motion.
I make a motion to approve the three sets of minutes.
My second.
Discussion. Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Date of next meeting, December 9th. That work for everyone?
Sure.
Okie doke. Correspondence? That was easy. The reports?
I never remember the order. When do we discuss? You have to tell me this every time.
Motion, second. Discussion.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the director and new services report.
Second. Any discussion questions?
Yes. Well, there was a few things I want to bring up on there.
Okay.
Andrew Developments, the Friends approached me, I think it was. I talked to Denise, who is the treasurer, on Saturday, I believe. And they had a surplus of money that they would love to spend on the library. So they were asking for large wish list items. I had some small things for the children's section, a few magazines and things like that. But they are looking to spend a good chunk of money. So we had talked about the shed last month. And I brought that up to them because storage is always so much needed here. And she thought that was a good idea because it would be a large purchase.
Something we look at.
I did print that out.
Me.
Don had come into the library right after she had left. So I mentioned it to him and he looked up a few, got some quotes that we will look at. I think just one came through so far.
Yes.
Okay.
I like this feature. White.
Yeah. That's a metal building.
Oh, you've seen it. Yeah.
I don't know if that's, I don't think Amy has seen it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, who did you say?
Have you seen it?
Within this request?
Oh, it's the Friends of the Library.
Oh, nice.
They have the.
Hello.
Initials.
They got the big donation from the Fowl and Law. And then with the book sale being so successful this year, they have.
We haven't started yet.
So they'll be giving the $20,000 for our budget, which they give us every year. And then they have about another $30,000 that they would like to spend.
That's about 30,400, my bad.
Wow.
We were looking also at chairs. So that would be, the chairs themselves would be about $13,000, which sounds ridiculous, but it's 120 chairs. These are the ones that Denise had brought up. They're padded and they have upholstery on them. We'd probably get them in black.
They're stackable, right?
Yes, they're stackable. And then we would get probably three of the little dolly things that go with them. So that would be about $13,000. So.
How many chairs? I'm sorry?
It would be 120. We thought we would replace them all because we have them really old. And then, so everything, that's the capacity of our room is 120 people.
What do we do with the old chairs? Are they the libraries or Friends?
They belong to the library. I think they came from the old school, most of them. I don't think the library purchased them. I think at least one set of them. Because there's two different sets. One of them came from the, when they closed down the old middle school. And then the other set, I would have to check where those came from originally.
That question, because it's easier if they're Friends' old, they get rid of it.
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, those would probably just go. I don't think anybody would want them at this point. But I will check because that's the protocol, but I don't think anybody would want them.
Is it 120 old ones?
We have, I believe it's 75 of the ones that we have out all the time and that we put out for groups. And then we have the set that we got from the library, which I, I mean, from the school, which I believe is another 50. So you can pass that around if you want. Those are the ones that we were looking at. They were 114 each from the library store. But I looked at Denko, where we have a, we're part of a group that we get a discount. And they would be about $90 each.
And you said black?
Yeah, I thought we would get black because then they would stay cleaner. And the new tables we just got are black, so everything would match. Here's the printout that Don sent me, the building.
Do they have it in gray? Gray is nice, too.
Yeah, I thought it would get dirty faster, though. I like to keep things as clean as possible.
If you look at black cars, they tend to be the dirtier ones.
Yeah. But if you're upholstery wise, I mean, we can go with gray. I thought either one was nice, but.
Doesn't matter to me.
So if the sale ends on November?
I saw that, yes.
They also have taxes they need that we don't have to pay.
Oh.
They got some work to do in the court. We just, the first one that came in.
And where would you put the shed?
I haven't talked to anybody, so.
That was, Don had talked about, she was asking where the shed would go. So it would go up here.
Where that one is.
Oh.
We'd get, I could get the town hold and make it level. They'd have to fill.
Oh, you're getting rid of that one?
I thought we'd move that one somewhere else to put outdoor stuff in. Maybe a lawnmower eventually and the stuff that John would do outside.
And then Fowl would also be able to hopefully store their books in there for the book sale. They wouldn't have to spend to get the pub every year.
Oh, yeah. That's great.
So.
Try to look at some of the pluses.
And we've been talking about doing a library of things for a while now. And we just could not come up with enough storage for the items. So this would free up our closet in the community room. Because that's mostly just tables and chairs in there at this point. And then that would be guest rooms to that. So yeah, those would be in the new shed.
And it was easy enough to go from, just to go right out.
And they'd be on, you know, rolling dollies. So it's not often that we have to put out all the chairs, just, you know, a few times a year for larger programs. So that was where we are with that. Their meeting, the Fowl board meets again on November 14th. So I was going to bring them these ideas and see what they say. But they seemed pretty, you know, excited about the idea of getting, especially new chairs.
You could bring that. You could work that. But we are working on a couple of them.
Yeah.
We're trying to get the prices all about the same size of buildings, so apples and apples.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if we wanted to go slightly smaller to keep it within about the $30,000 range. Because if we're spending 10 on the chairs, a little over 10. So.
We could tweak that. Like I said, taxes are in there. That's $2,500. That doesn't count.
Yeah.
And there's some land prep in there, which I thought we needed the town to do.
Okay.
We have a tonne filled out, paddled, different around the school.
So I think that was the only thing from the director's report that I wanted to bring up to you all. Other than that, everything was going really well. Oh, we did get the new update for the HVAC system, which I don't, oh, no, that's down further. Never mind. That's actually on the agenda, so we'll go back to that.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Amy.
Okay, so we have.
Motion, second. Sorry, sorry.
What would we do without you?
You could never leave.
So our Cozy Craft Club has risen in the number of people we have. We have seven right now, which is great. Cataloging wise, not much has happened because of our supplier. Ingram isn't sending a lot of stuff. I actually had a meeting with the other catalogers around in sales and they're having the same issue. They're like two months back. So I'm relabeling things in here and updating everything while waiting for our supplies to come in. So we have no new books right now.
Very frustrating.
Yeah.
Did they give you a reason why?
They gave us a lot of reasons.
They had a lot of excuses, but none of them were really.
Is there any other source besides them?
There is. We have Baker &amp; Taylor, which is, they brought them up there too a lot during the meeting. And the day after we had the meeting, Ingram started sending out a few books. So I don't know if someone, a couple librarians there also complained. And they got kind of scared that we're all going to just jump ship over to Baker &amp; Taylor.
Because we do get a discount through Ingram because most of sales uses it.
Yeah.
I think they are checking into whether Baker &amp; Taylor would give us, if a lot of people.
We'd have two vendors.
Move over.
Yeah.
Because it's very frustrating. We haven't gotten a book. We have two large orders in and they're just not showing up.
And now you have more room.
I know. We have nothing to fill it with.
Anything he's waiting to do. So it's been very, we haven't gotten anything, I think, since the beginning of September. And then we got like a little box with like 10.
Just to like classify us. It wasn't enough. It's very frustrating.
Some libraries are actually even worse off than that. So it's very.
What's like one excuse?
They're trying to, they have 100 new people and they're trying to like.
Train them?
Yeah, train them. And they had so many excuses, but that was.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second. We already did that.
We did.
Aye?
Aye.
The Friends update, I'll just echo what Bonnie said. They're having their annual meeting on the 14th at 6:30, but they've invited board members for dinner at 5:30, 5:30, 6:30. And then the general annual meeting is open to the public. So if you haven't.
What day is that again?
Thursday. Thursday, November 14th. If you haven't RISWIP yet to see Branko at Fowl to say whether or not you're coming. She asked that we people RISWIP by, I think, the 5th. Just let them know so they know how much soup to provide. So that was nice. And they're including their book sale volunteers at that as well.
And they'll have that, the food here as well, the dinner here as well?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and that's all I have from the Friends.
Do we have to accept that?
Yeah, usually.
Motion to accept.
Second. Any seconds? I don't think your chair is supposed to second.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll second if no one else will. Okay, safety subcommittee.
Is the safety part of the cameras and all that, it's kind of grouped together?
Yeah, that's all in the safety.
I was informed that we're not going to be able to use that water down there. By the Board of Health. I think they're afraid that somebody might drink it and we don't test it. So they won't use that. So we've got a quote from Samco to bring a water line from wherever we are. Where the water comes in over to the other side of the building, outside. You know, have frost proof things on so it won't break and stuff. So I'm going to go ahead and submit that to finish up this ADA walkway thing. Because that's what was holding us up. And that's what the first shed was going to be, to move that one down there to put store it in. We'll still put our outdoor stuff down there. So we won't need a shed from the mant table.
Oh, okay.
All I needed to do is add the water line and put it back together.
What is the water line for, for outside, for the walkway?
We have nothing to irrigate over there. We have a trick. There's just the water. And to lug so much hose all the way over there is just crazy.
From the top, skip.
It's only a couple thousand dollars I think you need to run the water line and insulate it and everything. So that'll be ready to go. So that will take care of the cameras and finish that off outside. And I can get that out this week.
Hooray.
Do you, is there anything else you want to put back into that before we close it?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay. New business, Board of Health request to place air quality sensor.
So Connie Wright in from the Board of Health, also volunteers here, so she had brought up. The town had received a grant to put air quality sensors in a few locations around town. And she had asked if the library would be one of those locations. So I did email some further information about what the sensors were and everything.
I read the link and stuff. I'm not sure what they're going to do with that information. I'm not sure what it means.
Do you have an air quality issue in the building?
It would be outside air quality.
They're going outside air monitoring.
To know what?
There, it's a certain type of, I did print it out.
You did? I read it like a paper or something?
Yeah. There's a certain type of particulate in the air that they would test for.
But what do they do?
I, I don't know. That much I don't. I don't know beyond they just wanted to.
Because they don't do it at public buildings. I don't know what you would do with it.
I think it would be three or four.
Indoor air quality.
That's what I.
Yeah, this would be outdoor. There's a certain type of particulate.
We have indoor purifiers, right?
We do, yes. We have air purifiers in the building.
What can you, just a general question, what can you do about the outside air? Like by now.
It was quite expensive.
They already got it.
It's not like a good idea.
I know, but they're, but they're spending a lot of money.
They did get a grant through Massachusetts.
I went through something similar that with the Portsmouth School Department. The state wanted everybody to put Correl dispensers in every classroom. Were they bottom and put them in the first year? Then the schools had to pay for everything after that. And it was like $9,000 a year just for Correl. You figure how many classrooms? There's one in every classroom. So I mean, I just don't know what they're going to do with the information.
I did talk to John and apparently there is a problem with our outdoor outlets. So I'm not sure, I'm going to have somebody look at them.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if that would even be an option for them at this point. As when I had last talked to her last week, it was just whether we had the outlets and.
John said they haven't worked forever.
Which I.
But they're, so it's a plug-in?
Yeah, it would go into one of the outlets outside and it would use our Wi-Fi basically. And it would, it puts all the information that it gets on a map that.
Yeah, and anybody can access that map to see what it is. I'm just concerned, what are they going to do with the information? They're going to make us do something?
I don't know.
Can we ask question about that?
Yes.
And does she need to know now?
She does need to know. They already had the sensors and I think they might have already put a few of them up. So it was more, I said I would bring it to you today. But if we don't have the outlet, I think it's sort of a moot point. I think by the time we got somebody.
I thought I read that they wanted it up high.
She said, I did tell her they were down below and she, you know, they're down on the bottom of the building. And that seemed to be okay. It was more above sea level. They have to be a certain height above sea level.
Didn't it say 30 feet?
Okay.
Did it say 30 feet?
That's what I read.
Yeah, it said that in the link she sent. But when I was talking to her, she was aware that they are on the bottom of the building, the outlets that we have. So.
So if it's 30 feet, you just have to run an extension cord or something.
Yeah.
An outdoor extension cord is not good for a long-term use.
So it sounds like two issues. We don't seem to think that the electrical outlet she's looking for is what.
Which I just found out, yes.
And then secondly, what are they going to do with the data? What is it for?
That I could find out, but if we can't have them here because of the outdoor issues, I don't know when someone would even be able to come to look at that. I think it would probably be at least a week or so.
Let's see if they have power to them.
Because that was actually during our Halloween program, we were trying to plug in the blow up Halloween decorations. And it was not working. John was here with his grandson and he checked all the fuses. And he couldn't find us. We'll have to have an electrician come.
It might be one of those things when you build the building, you did it but never hooked them up?
It's quite possible, yeah. So because it's, she needed the answer, I feel like it's not going to work out unless she wants to wait until.
I'm letting her be. Everybody has their own opinion, but.
I think we need more info and we shouldn't have time for that. So maybe the next go round. But she did let us know that we do have a different issue, which is outdoor electrical.
Yes.
So thank you. We'll work on that instead.
I don't like the way it was presented. We should be involved in the process, not here's what you want to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't like that part.
Shall we take it to a formal vote?
I think so. So we need a motion and a second.
I make a motion that we not approve.
Is there a second? All in favor of the motion to not approve it? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will not approve. Okay, the HVAC system.
We did get a new quote from Samco for the capital improvement, which I sent in at the beginning of the month. Our, you know, one big capital improvement project through the town would be a new HVAC system. Ours is almost 15 years old, I believe. It was from the addition, most of it. Some of it is even previous.
The outdoor units, original?
Yeah. And then I think the ones on the roof and the other, there's, I think, five other units that are, were from the addition. We had a really old quote of about $70,000. So we got a new one and it brought it up to 102,000. So we are, based on the five-year plan that they had, we would be up to get that done in 2027. Fiscal year 2027.
That might change because they did a lot of money back from the state that they didn't count on. So it said some of that would go to the, more that would go to the capital improvement.
So as of the past five-year plan, but they're working on the next five-year.
So you don't have to wait till 2027?
We probably still will, if then, I think.
Or we could ask the maintenance foundation.
It's possible if we don't want to wait. As of right now, I mean, it is working.
It's probably going to go up.
Yes, yeah.
The upwards, I think is fine. The outdoor, what I'd be worried about.
Yeah, that's the oldest.
And that takes care of everything but the addition. And this unit, and this one has its own unit, this room.
The estimate is good for one year, the 102,000.
And you just got it?
Yes.
Did you have any problems with the AC?
We were having little problems. The thermostat in the children's area had to be replaced recently. And it's, you know, it's just age-wise, a lot of little things are cropping up. So far, not on wood. There hasn't been anything big. But it is getting to the end of its life expectancy.
Does anybody think I should ask to put that in the maintenance?
We could wait and see what they say with the capital improvement, whether we're still on for 2027.
Yeah.
And they put us off to 2027. We just see what happens.
Right. Because if it works until then.
Yeah. And, and there are three separate units out there. Chances are not all three are bringing it at one time.
What's the age for each unit, do you mean?
The three out, out there was when the additions built, in 2000.
I'm trying to think of the year, the addition.
It was 2010, I believe. Or they were put in 2009 and officially it was 2010.
Life span is 15 years. And the one outside is going on.
17, I think.
1970? 71 the library has built?
That's been replaced since then. It's, that one out there is about 17 years old now.
17?
Yeah. And they said 15 to 20 for the estimate of how.
So 15 years is the life expectancy. So you're going to go one way to be dying to do it. But, and the new ones will be a lot more energy efficient than the old ones.
Perfect.
I'd be more concerned about the summer than the winter. Because the other ones, I think, could keep up. In summer, I would be concerned about the condition of the air with all books.
It does get very humid in here during the summer.
All right, thank you. Review of trust funds?
Okay. So that's probably what's during the last meeting. We are supposed to do a reading of a few of the older trust funds, the way they were set up. We're just supposed to go over that once a year. It's supposed to be right after the town meeting in May. But I was not worried for the time, so I figured we'd do it now and then we'll start in May again. So, okay, so Isabel C. Bowen Memorial Fund. To use the income from the trust fund annually for equipment, works of art, services, and the purchase of and subscription to books, periodicals, audiovisual materials, and any and all other educational items, supplies, and media relating to fine arts.
Wherever you're at.
Yeah, do we?
Oh, I didn't give you a copy of this. This is just. Would you, do you want a copy?
Yes.
Do you want to do that before I read them? Okay, let me go make a copy of all of these.
Should that describe how all the trust funds should be distributed?
Just a few of the older ones. The rest, it wasn't. I have that information also and I'll make you a copy of it. Okay, I'll be right back. Hold on a second.
Silence. Did you turn that off? Did you turn that off when you?
No.
We don't talk about that.
No, only if you call like a recess, I, I stop.
Oh. That's kind of a nice shed.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Here, what are you doing? You're sitting there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I take it Toucha Truck was well attended.
Mm-hmm. 200 plus.
Wow.
Very popular. They had a great time, yeah.
The Toucha Truck was pretty good, too. Actually, John's grandson was dressed up as a transformer.
Oh, goodness.
So he'd be standing up and if he went down, he had this front, his tires were his front legs.
There was a costume on TV. It was for women on a roller coaster. Did you see it?
No.
The seat was in front of them and they, they pretended they were. It was really clever.
Those are the fun ones. A lot of creativity out there.
We never get any kids.
No, we don't either.
We haven't had these as our kids were little. Just dark up on the hill, so. And people want to go with a lot of houses.
Right, right.
And they liked going to the fire station, coming here, going down to Adamsville Recreation.
We had a crew of about 30 kids stop at the Grady Union.
Wow.
They all came in, you couldn't even get out the door. They had baby carriages lined up like cars parked. It was cute.
Destination trick-or-treating.
I think I remember either George or Bonnie saying the filters for those air purifiers are expensive. The ones we have in here. And we have a few of them, don't we?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask Samco if anything they can do with a bigger unit for outside will take care of those.
Thank you.
That looked like, that was hand typed.
Yeah, it does look like a typewriter.
Yeah, the pages are all yellow.
Thank you. The typewriter.
Do you?
Yes.
I have an old Blackman.
We purchased one some years ago. Because it was something that was needed.
Funny, are the filters expensive with the air purifiers?
The round ones, yes, they are very expensive. The other ones are, I think, no, they're not. We have three of this kind of square ones that the town had given us during COVID. And those aren't expensive, but the ones Sue Branko had bought years ago, those are really expensive.
I was thinking, maybe asking Samco if there's a bigger unit, like you could put outside with different things inside. To run as one unit, like you do HVAC.
Yeah. So I think we have five right now in various areas around the library. Okay. So do you want me to just start again?
Oh, sure.
The reading part? Okay. So for Isabel C. Bowen Memorial Fund. To use the income from the trust fund annually for equipment, works of art, services, and the purchase of and subscription to books, periodicals, audiovisual materials, and any and all other educational items, supplies, and media relating to fine arts, arts and crafts, antiques, flower range, and gardening, and cookery. These services and items shall be available for use free of charge by any person entitled to use Westport Free Public Library. The selection and purchase of the items and services in the above paragraph shall be made by a majority vote of the library board of trustees after consultation with the librarian. In the event that the board of trustees shall determine for good cause at any time or times that the entire annual income shall not be expended, then the unexpended income may be accumulated and dispersed at any subsequent time or times for the trust fund purposes. Although it is my wish that wherever advisable, the entire annual income be expended annually. And I was told that's the only part that actually has to be read out loud during the meeting, but there is more to it.
Which, which place does that apply to?
This is the Isabel C. Bowen Memorial Fund. That's the first page. The Arlene, on the second page, the Arlene A. Gifford Memorial Fund. To use the income from the trust fund annually for the purchase of large print books, periodicals, newspapers, and other materials and services that would benefit the visually handicapped. These items shall be available for use free of charge by any person entitled to use the Westport Free Public Library. The selection and purchase of the items in the above paragraph shall be made by a majority vote of the library board of trustees after consultation with the librarian. In the event that the board of trustees shall determine for good cause at any time or times that the entire annual income shall not be expended, then the unexpended income may be accumulated and dispersed at any subsequent time or times for the trust fund purposes. Although it is our wish that wherever advisable, the entire annual income be expended annually. And then we have on page three, the Alice Dennett Tripp Memorial Fund. To use the income from the trust fund annually for equipment, services, and the purchase of and subscription to books, periodicals, audiovisual materials, and any and all other educational items, supplies, and media that would be of interest to senior citizens and/or children. These services and items shall be available for use free of charge by any person entitled to use Westport Free Public Library. The selection and purchase of the items and services in the above paragraph shall be made by a majority vote of the Library Board of Trustees after consultation with the library. In the event that the Board of Trustees shall determine for good cause at any time or times that the entire annual income shall not be expended, then the unexpended income may be accumulated and dispersed at any subsequent time or times for the trust fund purposes. Although it is my wish that wherever advisable, the entire annual income be expended annually. And then on page four, we have the Ronald A. and Randall A. Tripp Library Trust. And that is to use the income from the trust fund annually for the purchase of subscription, uh, the purchase of and subscription to books, magazines, journals, periodicals, film strips, and any and all other educational items and media relating to agriculture, animal husbandry, farming, industrial and automotive arts, and sciences of every sort and nature. And those are the ones that officially have to be read out during the meeting. Um, the rest of them, the other last two pages, are a list of all of the trusts, the beginning balance we had and when it was established, and it has all of the, um, the provisions for each one as to what it can be used for. And then I also gave you a list of where we are with the interest. Um, that is a list of all of our funds that we have. Yes, that sheet that I passed out earlier, that has a list of all of our funds and what is available in the interest. Some of them are, it's not a lot. Um, some of them are getting a bit smaller.
There was a time when interest rates were beneficial.
Yeah. So that is where we are, if there was any questions about that.
So the bottom line, if what's available?
That's what's available right now, yes.
This is very interesting, you've seen all of this stuff before.
So I know George, um, at least last year, had waited and not used the trust funds because it was a small, such a small amount. He was waiting for it to build up a little more.
So some of these you have to spend once a year annually, or can you spend it any time during?
Anytime during the year.
And the amount is specified, that you can spend it?
What we, like, for Pelletier, for Pelletier, for example, if you look at the bottom, we have ninety-five dollars and eighty-three cents in interest that can be spent from that account.
Out of the twenty-five?
Out of the twenty-five hundred. That was the original amount donated. So most of them are like that?
Yeah, so that's about, what, three books, maybe?
Uh, probably, yeah.
So like, as an example, the expansion gift says sixty-four thousand, and we have sixty-one thousand to spend?
Yes, whatever.
Spend that on whatever.
Yes.
That had, had no restrictions.
No, that one doesn't. That one, um, the gift account, and.
Not Helen Ellis. No, the Lash Fund is strictly, um, tech.
Yeah, that's all.
And that was, um, the fact that we could use it with technology, meant we had something to take care of all our computers. And that was the Lash, Virginia Lash.
That pays for any time we have to upgrade our computers. Um, we use for our ancestry dot com database, that comes out of the Lash Fund, and it's things like that.
And that went down to zero once, didn't it, or close?
I don't know about that. That was before me.
And what they did was they replenished it.
Yes, I remember that. And that's strictly IT stuff?
Well, that's, that's a big item that we didn't have money for, and that's, um, that's what they agreed to. But it wasn't, it gave us a broader base.
So the only ones without restrictions is the gift account?
Oh, that's it, yeah.
And the Lash?
Manton, well, Lash has a restriction, but technology is a broad field.
Right, but the expansion is, is Manton, right?
Correct.
And I don't believe that has any restrictions on it, and the gift account, where all of our, you know, little donations go, it doesn't have any restrictions.
And are these updated by the town as?
Yes, um, Nicole, the town accountant, had sent me an updated list.
How often does she do that?
Um, just once a year, I think, normally, but I could ask.
Yeah, because it only, it's only needed once a year.
Yeah, and it doesn't add up that quickly.
It might be after election, because that's when they elect trust, after, it's at after-town meeting.
Yeah, she had sent it, um, I had asked in July, once we started the new fiscal year, to get an idea of where we were starting.
I'm a trust, I'm a trust commissioner. But I've never done anything. Nobody ever does anything. Nobody knows, nobody even knows what they do. Besides the town accountant, or Sue Bray.
Um, Sean was a trust commissioner for a while, and they didn't meet. It's, it's pretty well set in stone that it's just the accountant really takes care of it.
Pretty much, yeah.
So I got elected to a position that does nothing?
Yeah, exactly.
Was it easy ones?
They don't even meet.
Now, do you have a, like, a spreadsheet that says what it is, when you spend something, you take it off?
Yeah, I have a running total, and I keep track of every, um, I have a running total of everything that is materials-based, because that we need for our state funding information, and then anything else that gets spent out of the accounts.
And you use these accounts throughout the year?
Yes.
Very important, thank you.
The only question was, does, do the trustees want me to use some of these smaller accounts, or do we keep letting them build up a little bit?
Kind of, it depends on what you need.
Okay, because with the gift account, you know, we have enough for our materials budget to meet what we need to for state funding, so we could let them ride a little longer and build them up a little bit.
Something happens and you need.
Okay.
Then you fall back.
That's right.
Yeah, there's probably no reason for you, or you couldn't combine some of these, because there are so many small ones.
But you can't.
Because you can't.
No, the way it was set up originally with the families, they have to be, they're all separate things.
Everyone's, is important to them.
I got you.
And they all have specific, you know, restrictions and things they want children's books.
Now, is there anything recognizing, any of these trusts? You know, the, the Lash was the front of the desk, right?
Well, that was a gift. That was a separate gift.
And I know there's one for the Tripp brothers, a little black.
During the construction, that was, uh, we needed a desk, and the family, their mom brought them to the library all the time when they were kids, so they wanted the desk. And they wanted the plaque, and her daughter chose and purchased the plaque, because that was the way she wanted it.
Is there any outreach to these, um, fund families?
Most of them don't really ask for updates or anything, except for the Hoyt Trust, the Harry R. Hoyt Trust. They do ask that, um, they get sent a type, uh, the books that are chosen to look over. Um, that's the only one who's, as far as I know, who has ever asked for an update on.
I wonder, we were looking at that Hoyt thing, Horst and whatever it is. Yes, that, I'm sorry. And determined whether we had to keep it or not keep it, if we wanted to sell it, who it belonged to. I think George was throwing that. I don't know where it ever went.
Um, I can ask George. I'm not quite sure what the final answer was. I believe it's library property. As far as I know, it was donated to the library, so it would be up to the trustees what happens to it, as far as I know. But I can double check with George.
Wait, if you had to appraise, it'd have to be appraised by a licensed something.
It would, yes.
And there is someone in Westport.
Probably for another day.
Yeah, I can ask George where, um, you know, what the final answer was on that.
I don't think he had a final answer.
No, okay.
Was of the value, but I think he did say that it belonged to the library, but.
I think it was, I heard, I heard somebody said that unofficially.
We need a motion and a second on accepting trust fund.
Motion to accept the report on the trust funds.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's a lot of work to keep up with.
Yes.
Yes.
It must be like doing a puzzle when you pay the bills.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Well, I know that the Mantons wanted to know what account we had to use for this. They wanted to know whether it was going to the friends or the town.
Yeah.
And if that's going to the town, we gave them an accounting number. It would probably be a new one of these.
Um, I thought, we decided it was going to go to the expansion. I thought that was going to go into the expansion gift account, because that was from the man.
Somebody told us where it was going, but then no.
I think it was, um, I think they talked about it, and it was going to go into the expansion gift account, since that was the man fund money already.
And that's the nice one, if there's anything left over, we could do whatever we want.
Carpet.
Don't just ask that that be put on, because he missed it last month.
I have the application process to make those, but I want to make sure we're a good go.
Final choice was the blue stripe, and then it would kind of look like that, but with blue. And then we wanted to ask if we could do, um, rainbow stripes in the kit section.
You could change it up, the price is the same.
Okay.
You would pretty much say this section goes this way, this one goes this way, or this one's a different color.
Okay.
However you want to do it.
Okay.
So I can't remember what that price was, but I guess, I have it at home, I guess it's fifty-five thousand or something.
Wow.
And that's leaving everything in place, cutting around it. Because if we had to move it, you probably had another hundred thousand to look to find a place to store all the books, and what would we do with the library?
Yeah.
So, cutting around it. I'll go ahead and submit that, if everybody's in agreement?
Sure.
And I guess I have the process here.
Did we move everything when we did the expansion?
I think so.
To put in the new carpeting?
I just started working here, so I don't remember. I was very part-time back then, so I don't remember a lot.
Linda complained about it, yeah. Pretty sure she complained about it, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but I think so, yeah, I think everything else.
I, I don't recall.
The carpeting is a Bay Post, um, request.
And they do pick it December, so the timing is good.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you.
Is it, is it a blanket, like, could they, if they, did you just say fifty-five thousand dollars for carpet?
Yeah, that's what I thought you said, that that request is.
But they're easier to install. Other carpet is.
Roll, cut.
You have a ten-foot section, you got six feet, you have a lot of waste.
Mm-hmm, yes.
They may have a minimum that they, a maximum.
That's what I'm thinking, if they, but if they offer partial.
When I stopped by the bank, I asked Gina.
Okay.
Yeah.
If there's a max.
That, that's a big contribution for one stop.
Yeah, because they have different people, yeah.
It doesn't talk about a dollar.
If they grant it, we should give them a plaque.
Right.
You know, when we were doing the expansion, people were saying, oh, we could put a name, put a name, put a name, but the name has to be worthy.
And also, it starts to look like advertising versus, versus, you know, oh, it's nice to offer and just.
Different people spoke to us about how a, a gift like that. You know, the circulation desk was a purchase, and that was in memory of someone.
Yeah.
And that, but you wouldn't do everything, you know, it, it had to be something worthy. It gets tricky.
I know the Man, I've talked to them, and they gave us money to be FW, they didn't want their name out there.
Uh-huh. Now, the community.
There's true views.
Because they don't want everybody.
Everyone else, yeah.
The community room is the Manton community room. And that, they agreed to. Which was kind of nice, the grandkids cut the ribbon and.
Sweet.
Both daughters live in town now, right?
I know one does, both, oh, maybe.
I think they were moving.
They're vested in Westport. And that's a very nice thing.
You ever read the history of that whole account? Of the bankies daughter, it was her side of the family.
I know that.
It's a, a nice paragraph, or it's probably like three pages of how it all evolved, and how much money has to be given away annually. And it's all over the country and half of the world. I think it's thirty-five million annually has to be given away.
What a nice problem to have.
Yes.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
And he was knighted. He was Sir Ed when we entered.
Oh, really?
Yes. So we don't need a vote, correct?
No.
Other topics not anticipated? Anything?
I think we covered everything.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.